Fires.
The servers were working, that's what's going on.
No, it isn't.
Server's working too?
Yeah.
So the rest of the server is good?
Yeah. Go back, touch this.
Well, that's what.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah.
The dummy, you have to touch it.
Hi guys.
Good morning.
Hi there.
Now, okay, say we're not here. I'm good, I'm good. Let's go over here.
Hi Mike.
Good morning gentlemen.
Hi Mike.
Good morning.
How are you?
You're not a gentleman?
No. That's how I'm checked anyway.
Susan, why don't I do it?
How are you?
I'm good. I'm good, glad to see the rain.
Yeah, we're good.
Really glad to see the rain.
What's up?
I just want to talk to you guys about some stuff on my budget for next year. Okay. The urinal upstairs.
Still there.
Yeah, it's still there.
Still there.
Morning Mike.
Morning.
Anyway, so I was thinking we should change those bathrooms around. Make the double stall where the ladies can, since there's more ladies working up there. And use the little one for the men. Just pull that their urinal out, we would need a new toilet over on the one side. The old one that's in there is just junk. And then pull that urinal, probably have to redo the floors with new tile like the ones upstairs or whatever. Boy, they are. So, that's just one thing you might need to consider. I have not gotten any information yet at all, I needed to, I just wanted to test base on the figures on it.
I guess we should be able to get the.
That come out of county building?
Yeah.
So, on the budget, yeah, we talked about it quite a bit. I see what she is saying, that you know, a guy could put in a budget there.
So I think we just have to do that and we'll put it on the agenda for a decision.
Did you find it? Must I get some bids?
Yeah.
Okay then, are you okay with changing them up? Make the small one the bins and that one the.
Where are you gonna say?
You know.
Mike, we're gonna have to. We need to take a look at it.
Yeah.
I can see where in minutes got a little more room, like you said, 90% of the women work up there.
Well, you know, I mean, other than court time or, you know, when they have prisoners here, that'd be easier for Scott to watch them in just one little cans to. And the window there's smaller, so they won't be able to, you know, they can't get that window all the way open, just for, you know, reasons on that mode.
No, it's our own target.
Well, that's true, good point. That's true.
Not here today.
Yeah, well, he is, he took his smart pill this morning.
Janine looking or something. Mike got a little sleep.
Okay.
Well, so I guess we'll consider that and if you're good with some bins on what you want to do there.
Okay.
Either way.
Yeah, this task needs to be taken care of no matter which way we go. Okay, then underground sprinklers. Want those be nice? Just throwing that out, you guys. I don't know which one to do, they're not that expensive to do, the only issue is that we would have to probably dig up the yard, you know, and all that happy stuff. Yeah.
But.
Something to consider.
You know, you gotta, it would make sure you have to get outside and get them drained.
Yeah, we got the air compressor downstairs that we use for the furnace, so I could use that to blow them out. I'd have to learn how to do it, because I'm not sure how, but.
I know how much it is.
We can look into it.
This is a good one. This is a good one.
Okay, we also.
County building. Oh, another, oh, the other project, yeah.
And then also, sorry, my allergies today, foundation. There's a sloughing going away, I showed that to you out here out back.
Right.
And I filled that hole up a couple times myself and Jan said she's filled it up a few times and just keeps sloughing away. We need to figure out where the heck that's going and what the deal is there. The building is starting to go that way, like the wall did. So, also there is a leak in the foundation over in this corner behind his office, where Kim's office is. And I found that out by putting sprinkler there.
Would our engineer, engineer firm, you can look at that.
Uncle's way.
Oh, you're right.
I would, yeah, definitely have the engineer check it out and see what's going on. Maybe we may have to dig up the. Around buildings to see where it's crap and what's going on.
Mike can give you the number for.
For the engineer?
For damn work started.
Call him and explain to him, now they have several engineers in that firm that do different things, okay? So you'd have to explain, you know, what you need, so bring it back to us based on what he says and what we need.
Okay, sounds good.
Is that right?
Chances are that the engineer will be here next month off and on.
Next month?
Yeah, because they're gonna start the damn work.
Okay.
I don't know if he's the right one or not.
Well, but, yeah.
He'll direct me the right, sure, Mike, he'll be the right person.
Well, then we kind of have, we can put a line on it to figure out, you know, on the project.
Okay.
Still a county building. That's pretty much everything there.
So when's your roofing guy coming?
I had one come last week on Friday. Ace Roofing. And he is, well, he told me that if we get that done this year, we're gonna be paying big bucks, because we're busy right now. He's willing to come and fix and patch some of the holes that he has seen up there when he was here. And he's gonna give you guys both a bid for now and spring. So if we want to wait till spring, he will make a deal with it on that bid for the spring one. To go out and take care of what he sees as an issue for this fall and winter, you know, to get it spied. And then start on it in the spring. So.
Just the discussions we had, I think are interesting, maybe if we had to budget to the point of spring, but eventually, don't we want to fix it when it's paid for?
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's important.
The whole thing needs to be redone, yes, and yes, what he suggested too, and he gave me some other suggestions and told me how they do it and all that kind of happy stuff, so. You know, I've learned a lot from him, you know.
You were gonna try to coordinate with the window guy?
Yeah, but I'm gonna put off the window guy till spring too now. Because it's just getting too late in the year and this alleyway out here where they put all that new dirt and crap up here, they've left a pile of black soil out here in the alleyway and it's slicker than heck. From when they remodeled that yard or redid that yard. So we need to contact him or have this city bring some gravel up or something, because it is slicker than snot. This morning coming up that was.
So good that he lives down in.
It's a city road, so we can travel the city and not do all of it.
It's a city deal, I thought I'd contact them, and actually the guy that owns that is a doctor named Condon.
That way they were not.
Right, well, he had that all re-landscaped. Yep, there was just a big ol' slickery mess there, so.
So make sure, you know, we got another project on the jail, well, like roof.
That guy that was here for Ace.
Make sure you touch bases with Mike on a regular basis about issues that we're having, please, can I help him? He's got plenty to do, I just want to make sure that maybe he could take over contacting and pushing these guys. They're upset.
Crack the whip, gotcha.
Yeah, crack the whip a little bit, because Mike's got other issues. And if he could, if he could hand some things off to you, that might be good.
Between the two of us.
You guys okay with that?
Okay, then the floors in the offices, them wooden floors, you know, like gym floors, they're, I don't know how long it's been since we had those done, I guess we could look that up. But they're, they're looking like they could probably use something come spring as well.
The main thing on, I don't know about me, but when you, like when you bring it in, let's get some fingers, because then we can look into the budget, because that's what it's all about.
Okay.
What's the expenditure of what we're gonna do.
And then, you know, you can help us set the priorities, what's more important.
Come here and then see what we can actually do outside with the view of this real estate stuff. We got to check on the whole lot crowd.
I mean, I think the foundation issues and the roof issues, by far, we'll, we're gonna take care of that first.
Yeah, and I don't know how you guys feel about lighting up the dome again. I think it would be nice if we could.
No, we're going to do it.
So is it, is it from the outside, you guys?
No, inside, there's fluorescent lights in there, if we could put LEDs like we did everywhere else. Up in there, you know, maybe a sensor as well, so when it gets dark, they come on.
Yeah.
And then they go off.
Also, go get a, go get a bed. Okay, there mark? I think that might be cool.
Yeah, okay.
So, just need to get some prices, so we can kind of.
Plan for next year.
Because we can look here in the county building and that, you know, and then just see what.
See what we're out of.
Which priority's gonna be, you know, try to get what we can, probably get them all, but we need to really.
Right, yeah, we'll just come in to you next time or whatever.
Well, then, you know, I don't know, this is a question. We never really made a decision, we'll do the court up here, you know, what that was gonna cost, we do have some information from Ray Bill, but he wasn't able to do it.
All these I could be able to do it?
Well, until winter. You couldn't do it.
It's been mentioned around too, that, you know, maybe the wheat people up there and the other people down there, where they already got the doors in, their two doors.
The wheat people don't want to live up here, I'll tell you that right now. They're not interested being on this main floor at all.
Well, I just think that the main floor, you know, I think we were talking about safety for the court.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, they cut up the building.
Right.
Well, I think you had one plan that was just a wall.
Just like they got down there now, yes, pretty much, just like you told me.
Yeah. So what's the commission, do you guys want to continue looking into that?
I think we want to go out and do it at the end of.
Okay. Or we should give Jean some idea that we are doing, right?
I think it's, I think it'd be wise. I'd keep, I knew it.
So we'll get that on the agenda next couple of days.
Okay.
And we'll make sure if you see it on the agenda, you'll come up, okay? Because we want some input from you, I know you went and talked to the contractor. Make a decision without all information, okay?
Right on.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, that's pretty much all I got on this question.
So how are things mechanically going, good?
Good, yeah.
Well, I guess we've got some research to.
To get after, yeah, I will do that.
Excuse me. Are you talking about the county building budget?
Yeah. County or, or this has a separate budget too.
Pardon?
This building has its own budget as well.
Well, are you talking about the budget here, the, well, they've got the computer maintenance and the building. Maintenance and repair. Is that on the budget?
That's what she was talking about, yeah?
We're not talking about computers.
Not computers, no, I'm just.
We're not talking about computers.
Computer maintenance going so high?
I have nothing to do with computers.
She's, she is the maintenance of the building, not computer.
The maintenance and the computer should not be in the same budget, they're two different budgets, I believe.
And then the building ground maintenance and repair, is that part of yours?
Yes.
Do you have a list of the projects that you're anticipating for the $340,000, is that, is that the roof project alone?
That's, yeah, the roof and, and, you know, whatever else we can get done, the foundation and the roof, basically.
We don't have no prices though.
No, we don't have any prices on any of that yet, we got, we got the roof out for bid right now.
And you're anticipating doing that next spring?
Correct.
So Mike, we wanted to put, move the court up while you list four on the agenda and set it up.
Oh, okay.
And was there another agenda item? Well, when she gets us prices, she'll.
She'll have to come back.
Come back and put it on the agenda.
Right.
And she'll pretty much have it prioritized. She can get them before the end of the week.
Well, there's another guy coming for the roof to come and look at it at the end of this week. Summit Roofing never got back to me for the weekend thing, he never did call me, my guy from Summit, so, and I was home all weekend.
Yeah.
So anyways, yeah, so we got three, possibly. I mean, one that came for sure and another one that's coming this week. They're for great bulbs.
Mr. Adler, and I agree with him, if, in fact, you could get some prizes before the end of the week, we could do a lot of work on your budget at the end of this session, okay?
Sure.
Can you come back up?
You betcha.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Okay, that should do it.
One more point, who, who is in charge of computer maintenance?
We have a contractor.
It's a contractor?
Yeah. What's the name of the contractor?
D I S.
D I S, little contractor.
Do you have any explanation why that's going up to $100,000?
It's just a budget and now I don't.
So there's no justification for it, it's just, you pulled it out of his butt or something?
No, no, he didn't do it.
Who, who did that?
What budget are you looking, what's the number of it? One little good.
$1,000, the county building is $41200.
That's just money that we set aside in case it gets to be that high, that's not exactly what it's gonna be.
We don't, we don't extend every one of the budgets, just have it in there.
That's what we want to make sure we have, what if something happens, covered by that amount. Up to that amount.
To that amount.
Alright, I'm out of here.
Thank you.
You betcha.
Well, why, why are you authorizing $100,000 going from $40,000 to $100,000?
You know, it doesn't mean we're spending.
Well, I know it's just a projection of what you're gonna expend, it sets, it sets the limit, and so why is the limit, that's gonna be included in the tax calculation, so why is that limit going from $40,000 to $100,000?
I don't know, is it? I can't answer that right now. Scott just wanted to look.
Will the contractor be attending a meeting?
I don't know, Mike, I don't think so.
Well, if there's no justification, it's a $100,000.
We're trying to get you an answer.
Huh?
Hang on, we're trying to get you an answer, okay? Scott's in your pocket right now.
Can I have just clarification on the agenda for these hearings, for the budget hearings? Every day it looks like the same, how do you know what budget you're gonna be discussing or?
Well, it gives time for department heads like Janine just came in and to look at their schedule and come in and talk about their budget. We've invited all of them, we've asked, talked to the sheriff and all of them to come in, so it gives them an opportunity while they're doing their job to come in and talk to us about it.
So the public doesn't know who's coming in or which ones you're talking about?
They've already looked at them, and if the public wants to talk about any budget, you can pull one, like we're doing with Dick right now.
But then if we have questions of the person who's the department, they're not here, right?
Right.
Okay.
I don't know, where was that, Dick, I'm looking for home one. Can I see that, Dick? Please.
Yeah, I think he's running over.
Then after Friday, that's the last one, and then you're gonna make a final decision. Okay.
It didn't go up, that's what was in last year, we just kept it the same, Dick.
Blanche said you gotta look on the one side, it's the same, and then they just moved, transferred it over, it didn't go up $100,000.
Well, his actual expenditures were $46,000, so.
They just keep that in in case something goes wrong with Blanche said with, you know, we got so many computers and Black Mountain, all that crap's lined up on the.
Well, I think you should put something in there that you anticipate it's gonna be, rather than just figure it out.
She said that this is the way we've done it.
So.
It's just, I got, I need to tell you what.
Well, I think, I think you should get some kind of a rationale for why that's gonna be $100,000.
Case they need it on computers.
Are those the computers that are in here? The master computer.
Does it include the sheriff?
The archives and everything.
We have it, $100,000 ain't much with computers. I mean, it's on the county line, we have a road cruiser on computers, everything.
Solid waste. Solid waste, yeah, that's true, they're connected to the.
Yeah, no, we don't, but we didn't.
Mobile data and all the patrol cars.
If you look into that general fund, no, it never does, it just transfers.
Your actual expenditures don't justify that in $100,000 a mile.
Well, in your opinion, that's true, but, that's your opinion.
Is it the same contractor that does the archives?
Right now, over in the, yeah.
Yeah, for everything?
Yeah, we're all on that same thing, and then Black Mountain does something with it, they're telling.
Because, I'll bring it up again, it's, it's not being kept up at all. Remember.
What does that mean, what are you saying exactly?
Well, I think, Bill, you said a while ago that you were gonna have somebody come in and try to upgrade it and take care of it and.
The archives you're talking about?
Yeah, you know.
So are they, what's the issue, are they way behind as far as?
They're behind, they're not user-friendly, any of the documents aren't included. You know, your motions, your resolutions that you, they're not in there. So it's kind of hard.
Oh, you're talking about the website, I'm sorry, I didn't understand what. The website.
Yeah. I think Granite County has one foot in the 20th century and one foot in the 21st century. And it makes it very confusing for the public in trying to get information.
Okay.
And remember I said that early in the year?
You know, we're certainly open to trying to improve every, you know, the website, and I agree with you, I think it's way better than two years ago, but it's kinda wasted a lot, absolutely. So I don't know, Mike, you talked to him several times, haven't you, about, you know, is it, is it a capacity issue? Part of it's a capacity issue, so we'd have to pay for different web setup?
I think we're contracted just a certain amount there, and we'd have to go through and get it all out again, so it's a lot of reason why we stay in the way we have, because.
What if we come and go up and talk to us, put it on the agenda, and have him come and talk to us about the cost of expanding and what our options are with what we've already got?
You have to go through each and then they'll be through.
But I'm just talking about the website. I mean, just information for the public. Because we haven't talked to him in a while, and it might be good to do that. Can you, can you put it out there, let's say, what do you guys want to do, October sometime? And then, you know, so Elena, if you think about it, could you make this a little list of things that you see on other websites that you think is more user-friendly and like.
Well, variety.
You mentioned the documents, but if they're, if between now and the time we have it on the agenda, how we can improve our website for information?
Well, I brought it up, that River Valley County is a good example, we've been using it for the G Mac, and that's a good.
So, just little things though that you think of, you know, we'll, we'll get it on the agenda and get the contractor here and talk about what we can and can't do with what we own, and then what we'd have to do to expand the website, okay?
Okay. Yeah, because I think I also brought up another county that was comparable to the size of Granite County, money-wise and population-wise. I don't remember which one that was, but I'll bring them both up.
Yeah, we don't know what they're.
Well, I've been, I've been on the valleys. They do quite a few things, one of the things they do is they do a video of the commission meetings, okay? But we don't have the capacity to do that and put it on like that, okay?
I don't think we have the capacity or the budget.
You know, we don't have the budget either, but, so there's some restrictions, but it doesn't mean that we can't make some improvements.
Not true, I don't think true, you can make some improvements.
Maybe like add documents or something. Scan documents in or something, I will, but let's, we can certainly find out.
Get an idea of what the cost is gonna be. See what we're gonna be doing first before we promise.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, because there's so much technology, I can even do a Facebook Live of the meetings, doesn't cost me anything. Real simple.
Okay, well, we'll see what current capacity we have, and if we're using it to abilities that we have, and then what would it cost us to expand it, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So did you see this? So, actual is. Is this means the stuff that you added in from last year's budget? What, I guess, what is this?
Or.
What's that? Better for actually? Could you call it in? And if you could use your phone, so what is this?
Team, that's the budget.
And that's my, your computer is.
So, you see, treasure went down, we're very highly anticipating.
So what end is our center?
Election stuff.
Bill can be. Oh. That's true, we could. Good. Well, maybe that's all right, because it's scary as fuck.
I don't have it in front of me, I have a question about the airport or airfield budget. How much money does that bring in yearly with their? How much money does that bring in yearly with their, um?
You, you have rents and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Maybe it has a little.
A few more, cause we gotta fix stuff with four.
Yes, the Philsburg one or Drummond's or total?
I guess both of them.
Yeah, Drummond don't have no rents.
I didn't think they had hangers there.
They used to have them and then they took them out and threw it back to insurance and stuff, so I don't know. Shouldn't be countywide, cause then you have the Drummond Airport and, you know.
You have the ship.
I just put off. Yes, I was just telling, asking her if she was interested in the Philsburg one or the Drummond one. The judge just let them know there's no more rentals. They just park there sometimes to tie them down for a night and that's it.
But they'd both be in the same budget, right? I mean, under, I don't know. Whatever the name of the budget is.
So it brings in about, last year it brought in twenty-six hundred and forty dollars. The year before it was only seven hundred and twenty, but he's trying to get them ready.
Were we up to stuff made of clean up or have to have airports and stores?
So total revenues, six thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars.
For the one year, or is that?
Uh, yeah, seventeen, eighteen.
And how much are they asking for in their budget total?
Well.
Aaron, this is my view of Granite County.
They got, uh.
In which part, you asked it about?
Well, when you give a budget, you know, preliminary budget, they give a total figure. And when I was involved with the airport years ago, I believe at that time they were getting eighty thousand dollars a year.
They have about sixty-seven thousand dollars in savings.
I didn't know, my, uh. Commissioner.
Their budget is available, not that they're gonna spend it. It's forty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars.
This is problem assured type.
Okay, with the cash, rental, everything that's, that they have available to.
Is unavailable.
You know, their insurance is like sixteen hundred bucks, stuff like that. They will spend that.
Looks like you're having computer problems.
Yeah.
A lot of it's due to the weather. Mine at home is fried or not fried. We were trying to do stuff this morning that could be about.
It's funny, they had a report on the radio about the grid going down.
So separately, you're gonna hear the airport, um, separate from this budget, okay? They wanna know if they qualify for federal funds of about a hundred and some, a hundred fifty a year. They think they do, but they have to look into it and there's a process they're gonna go through to try to figure out where they, uh, they've, and they've gotta apply for those funds to, to work on the number. And it'd take them quite a while, cause around, it's gonna be way more than a hundred fifty thousand, but.
What do we have? Commissioner.
He's been in like this about this.
Yeah, I've seen him do it.
Okay. Did you wanna look at it?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
No? That's what it's for. No?
And the laptop. Yeah, it works fine downstairs, but.
You a witch, Helen?
Hmm?
Are you a witch?
Yeah.
Dick, Dick, you have a copy of this? The airport?
Well, I think there's, I don't think so. A couple of the commissioners have.
I'll get a copy.
Tablets.
Judge.
I mean, to our wifi.
Doctor Warble, this is Ward. I called it and text him. Lord of the Cathedral, he was so screwed. I called you, you weren't working.
I called.
I called him.
So are you looking at the summary or the share of it?
This summary, this is the summary.
You have one page for the summary?
Yes, yes, Mr. President.
So I can get one?
Yeah, I think there's one way to the. Yeah, this is.
So, what she puts, all reserves in there? That's all the reserves on all the different budgets, is that right? Twenty-six percent?
Looks like it.
Oh, is the laptop here? Do you have to, you have to?
Yeah, he just, he was just telling me that.
There we go. You got it. Okay, thanks for your help. Thanks.
Happy?
Yes, sir.
Are we up?
I think so.
Sorry, could not open this page because server stop responded. Although I do have.
In the summary, I have another question, in the summary. The public nurse and that would be the Board of Health within there?
Where's that?
No, that's, the Board of Health is, uh.
Something different?
Yeah.
General welfare? That and the emergency departments, what would they be under?
Which one?
You know, the local emergency?
DES?
Like?
He has his own, uh, brick day.
Right, oh, so that's separate.
There's one in there, yeah.
Okay, that would be part of the summary for the whole thing.
So, it'd be, uh. I just looked at it and, uh, 'cause that's the one we're worrying about if we're just gonna have to make sure. 'Cause Michael keeps asking me to do more and more, but he's only part time doing it.
Okay, so that's, that's probably the safety committee, no, that's different too.
Well, I think, where are you looking at? Civil Defense?
Okay, so this is Granite County General Fund summary, just of the general fund?
Yeah.
Okey dokey.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then everything else, alright.
Civil would be like levied?
I gotcha.
Oh, I haven't looked.
As well, I mean.
I think there's just general, like, there might be for the state line of town.
Well, they give out five hundred billion dollars a year in grants.
Yeah.
But it doesn't, um, doesn't rate us, I looked up health and diseases. And I thought maybe it'd be a place I could, like, in Granite County, Montana. But that's what she said, that's what she.
Yeah, she said you could get.
Get a date out from, yeah, just look it up and it's all there, well, it's not.
Yeah, I didn't even look at that.
'Cause it, they're granted, too, that's about it.
You have to wait until it's done.
Yeah. And I did look up the, is, is, uh, blame here anymore?
Uh, we haven't seen it.
I did look up the health, uh, law of Montana regarding county commissioner responsibilities.
Oh.
There's blame here that we're doing, I did learn that, uh, Board of Health, I was a lot. And we need to maybe have some of these staff in discussions with Board of Health. If, and, you know, with, what Andy's doing, that's just what they want, you know?
Yeah, 'cause if, if they're, uh, helping these or something, Board of Health kind of.
Yeah, they have a ton of power, also. You know, and so, kinda our questions, and that would go through the Board of Health as much as through the county health courses for. What our policy should be, you know?
Right.
She's setting policy, kinda.
Herself?
Well, we sort of asked her to, but, but the Board of Health has got it.
Board of Health has got to be a controlling factor for her duties.
So we just wanted, uh, make sure we have a Board of Health, you know, if I'm there doing it, talk about. The policies that she started, right? Maybe have to get them involved.
And maybe a printout of, of what the Board of Health's role is regarding her, don't you think?
Yeah, well, it's pretty clear, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And I guess I know how to forge that mic, you know, suggestion? Just to put it out in general and get going on discussion about it.
Yeah.
That's what I do, because I mean, for us to set priorities in that area, I don't have the expertise. But the board, uh, the, our board does. And so, if they would have a conversation in front of us and Andy about what's more important than what. And, uh, I mean, I think to me, that's how we have better policies, but.
Yeah, could you offer that, yeah?
Right.
Doctor, I answered.
Right. I mean, that conversation we had with the public and the county health office was, was like, okay, so. You're a layman, we're gonna bully you into, you need to do this or that, and spend this kind of huge money. That's not fair, okay? And I, what we need to do is talk to Board of Health and say, well, you set the priorities, right?
Right.
What's gotta happen first, second, third? And then, the, we'll fund that on what she says.
Right.
'Cause it's all her, you know? What the hell, we can, and then let's just throw five billion dollars at it and say, we've got a good start. We can't do that. So I didn't even know how to argue with her because you're a medical professional.
Right.
And I'm like, I can't, how do you do that? I didn't wanna argue with her, I just really wanted to understand, there's only so much money. And we've been getting by pretty well.
Yeah. Or you can do, you know, under different programs.
Oh, shit. You know, you can have staff, twenty-five people in there, right? Probably keep them all busy.
Yeah.
But there are overlapping programs, do you understand?
Oh, yeah.
And that is the Board of Health's, I think, responsibility, set the minimums for us and then say, you know, you really need to fund these, okay? Okay?
Or making, or making note of it.
Well, one of the problems, it's not our fault, they have Board of Health, people don't show up. And we didn't report them, so it's kinda getting, uh.
Report who?
It's a good doctor, but it isn't the last thing, but it happens there, yeah.
Talking about public health, Annie Young, where does she have her, uh, office or whatever? Where is that?
It's in Drummond, you know, website in the ambulance building?
It is in Drummond?
She comes to B over two, she has little office in here.
Yeah.
Over here at the hospital?
Yeah.
Okay. 'Cause I was wondering, you know, to give shots and stuff, and I didn't even know where it was.
The other one's got a big sign on it down there, public health, you know?
By Drummond?
And then that, right next to the ambulance, senior ambulance shed.
And Drummond.
And then this one has a sign on the phone over here.
She was going with one of the last year.
See, that's another thing, on, on her website, on her page, there's not that much information. You know, nothing, really.
Which reminds me, I think I did, um, the, the hospital is considering building a building. Next to the hospital, right, or is it, is it?
They call it a suite, a C scan suite.
I think it's attached.
So, that's county property, county building, nobody said boo us about it.
We brought it to their attention, they were gonna come back, drop it, and we had Maria here, we brought it to our attention.
Well, I mean, I, I'm not sure that's Maria's job, that's the, the, uh.
Trusting.
Hospital board, and do we need to send a letter and say, hey?
Well, I think, I think we need to ask, not any money, but our agreements, 'cause I think that it says any improvements they make. Yet they should, they cease to become, just to become the property of the county. Anything that's permanent. I mean, any permanent improvements they make to the building or anything, stays with the building.
Stays with the building and, and refers to county owned property, right?
Right.
I mean, still in the town of Phillipsburg, right? So the town has to be involved with that also? Right, it's in the town?
It's county.
It's county building, but it's in the town.
That doesn't matter, the county owns the land. Well, it's through the town government.
Well, if you do any work, or any work to the building and stuff, don't they have to, for permits and stuff?
Think they come in and say?
I don't know if they have built improvements or anything else.
They'd go through the town, right? Yeah, that's what I mean, I don't think they even got in touch with the town.
Public health, I mean.
I think they've already put it out for bid, uh, on the prefabricated structure over there.
I think they had to, didn't they do, 'cause they were, God knows how way ahead of.
Yeah.
And then if the building was supposed to be up, remember when they come in, they would want to have, and if they don't, they could lose something, or it's not.
I, I haven't seen any indication how they intend to pay for it, I think the scanner is being paid for by a grant. But, uh, I don't, I don't see anything on their budget here, as far as capital expenditure for a building. Again, I, I don't know who's paying for it.
Yeah, there isn't much there, Elena, just a one page, you know, son of bubbles telling you what she does. How to contact her.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, it just seems like more and more.
Well, damn, for the money that she makes.
Take up some more of that half time and then, uh, we, if we ask her to put stuff on the website more, then she's gonna put that in there. Or Robert's.
So, I'm gonna keep my mouth shut. I know, it's hard for you guys to understand. The bananas, that'll do it.
I killed him, Mike, I thought he went mad.
I really got pissed.
What, are you gonna cry?
Yeah, I got tears in my eyes, 'cause I'm dying over here. I really said, yeah.
Well, don't go outside and, I just think, maybe we can help you.
I know, you know, you know when a spider fly, I just was running, 'cause I, I was, I could, I sat in my truck for ten minutes trying to get my breath.
I felt bad.
I thought, geez, you know, I'm gonna die with a piece of an hammer stuck in my throat.
And I thought, well, we're aware they never stayed in Argus. Actually, we'll sit here and tell Alfred.
For a moment.
Nope, be going, you don't gotta cry about it.
Oh, yeah, that really was fun, takes a lot of you, sure. Well, I'm looking at Powell's, Elena, there's quite a bit more here.
Don't they have a secretary, you know, that does all that? To help with their, they got a whole different setup than what we have, they got somebody that actually sets up their.
They have an IT person.
Well, I'm just saying, the potential is, uh, you know, it's like, it's like, 'cause I'm the public, and I wanna know, geez, can I get some help? So, like, this is Powell's, okay? And then you go in, and, so like, just say, you wanted to know about Adult Protective Services, or something, there's all kinds of stuff, but. So you just click on that. And, geez, you get all crazy. So, you're right, we, you know.
And I think you've got an IT person, right?
Yeah, well, we got a company, yeah. But, one of the things, correct me if I'm wrong, like, some of our issues are capacity, right? We have to buy a bigger.
Yes.
Not that, maybe we shouldn't, but we gotta look at it.
Yeah, tonight, uh, Missoula City of is gonna have a big, uh, meeting tonight. And that's gonna be something else to watch regarding their budget.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, I'm just talking about the Title III, the new Title III. I think I've figured out. So, the last time we advertised for money was in twenty sixteen, and we had to advertise we wanna spend it. And, um, we have the wildfire thing that we budgeted for the, the, the fire districts.
For the fire district?
Yeah. And there's seventeen thousand twenty-six left, so if they ever had to go out there and do what they did before, there's seventeen thousand twenty-six. With, um, the search and rescue, there is, uh, from the ten thousand that we advertised for in twenty sixteen. There was a balance before which added to that, which made it like twelve thousand something, so there's seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-five left. For the search and rescue.
'Cause they had the, they paid the claims on the snowmobiles and all that stuff when we were people. And when they got that skier that died.
Right.
They took the, you know, which I think is awesome, I mean, I don't, there's, there's, what are you saying?
So, that's just, and I'm, I'm not sure, I went ahead and budgeted fifty thousand anticipated.
Oh, okay.
Because there was fifty thousand that came in, see, like, we don't know what's really gonna come in, like, there, there, didn't anything come in for fifteen, sixteen? And in sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, we got fifty thousand, so I went ahead and just.
Yeah.
We get it, we get it, we don't, we don't, we can't spend it unless it's forest related, so the money just sits there. So, the one thing that I was asking, Mike, can we, can we, um, get interest on that?
Would you have to, how would you, I mean?
'Cause we have it sitting in the coffers, but we, right now, there's no interest being.
Would you put it in, like, step or something, you mean?
Well, I don't know if we are allowed to.
I don't know why you couldn't.
Okay, so that would be something that maybe I'll tell Vicki to throw this in to step, so that there's some interest coming in. So the interest coming in, would you be able to spend that?
I think it has to stay in.
It'd have to stay in there. So, and this is the fund that, that we're not, Mike was gonna look it up to see if we don't spend it, this is the one that, that, um, we might have to look back.
It has to be forest related, that's like.
Is this, is this separate from forest service law enforcement overtime?
Yeah.
So this separate?
Yeah, it's completely, yeah, wasn't we gonna try to use some of that on some of that? I thought, one time we talked about, made us a long, long Maxville, being that it was a forest service, you know, well, all that forest service country there. On the road, if we could use some money on it, I remember Cliff brought that up, and then we kinda forgot about it.
If, if it was.
Oh, on them bridges, but we went the other way.
If you could, you'd have to advertise it, right, Mike? So, I mean, you'd have to put it in the paper for like forty-five days, it's something to look into to see if you can.
But I, I think it's gonna be directly on the forest, you know, you can say this road goes to the forest, we're gonna. Well, it's just like, I think it would be just like the Black Pine Road, you know, 'cause once it breaks off, once the county stops, then it hits the forest. So something like that would be.
So, search and rescue, can we use it for assets like, you know, flying, or equipment, or anything like that?
Not this, this is.
This is going into the forest and search and rescue.
Right, could they, could they use it for, like, pay for helicopters, flying?
Yes, if it was in the forest.
In the forest, sorry, if there's search and rescue.
Search and rescue, some of us do that.
Can they buy, um, equipment?
I don't think so.
Okay.
That's what makes it so hard to just pay. But if I say we would've gotten that, we would've had given that pickup stuff.
And then we have the Title III old money, or if you call it new and old, because that's money that, there was a certain time when you were able to keep it.
Right.
And we can, do we still have to spend that on forest related stuff, do you think?
I think all that is, all that stuff that we took. Yeah, it's all forest, uh, forest reserve, just in different time.
So, and then that, she does put interest, which certainly interest on that.
You know, and some of that we should be looking in, 'cause we've done some stuff on forest service roads, and we might have been able to use some.
Yeah, and that's the thing that, well, the makers kind of aware of it, uh, that you, if you were going to, you'd have to advertise with some of that money, so. Okay?
Okay.
So, uh, do we have to share?
See, well.
Do we have to do action, do we have to do action, like move to do this or?
No, not much, you're gonna need more money than you would, and then you have to.
Do we advertise it, or just do it?
Yeah, I think, I think it should, I mean, the agenda is that you're thinking about a project and then using it to advertise. We're gonna, you gotta have all that, you know, where you can.
So what?
It's a thing, yeah.
If you did this and you found that you could do this, and then you would do the advertising, and then you would do a resolution and increase this budget, by resolution. And then you have the money in there, and, for example, like this one, um, what they spent, they spent three thousand in, in search and rescue. So that brings their total down to seven thousand, that's in there, I, I'm not sure how they can even request more money.
Well, I think, kind of, it wasn't if they were gonna request money, was if they were ready to go over the budget, that's what I think.
Well, it has to do with something that, that you have expended a certain amount of money, and then you can request more, but I'm not.
But they never know, and that was on that search and rescue, you know, we might not have to use any of it, that's the only thing that's really ever used it. 'Cause I remember a couple hundred, so maybe we just give it back, and we're gonna have that headache.
Okay, so I just wanted to show you that I did put fifty thousand anticipated, whether we get it or not, or if it's sitting in there.
Okay, we should do the advertisement. Put it on the agenda, get it in.
Well, we have to know what we want.
Yeah, you have to know exactly how much.
And where it is and everything. It's gotta be approved first before you can do it.
You don't have to advertise for this, this is already budgeted, this is the advertised for in twenty sixteen, and I just showed you that's what's left.
But if we didn't have a huge search and rescue thing, you would say we're gonna advertise.
Okay, after, after we have, okay, so we pay for food?
It was directly for.
Pay for fuel?
Yep.
Okay.
It's a tricky one.
Yeah.
You gotta be damn careful with it.
'Cause it's not.
We've talked about it, even.
Directly in the forest, you're, you know.
So, there was something in, in the.
The old stuff wasn't, it was hard to.
Yeah, you could, and we have old stuff too, they get like seventy-five thousand of that in the old. So, this one they got that, because the old I don't think yet that was.
No, a big search, these seventy-five, grab those people there. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Yeah, and then we talked, we talked about this, we made that, it's so taken care of.
Are you still, I have a problem with the last question, the trouble with lighting issue, that's not gonna talk about.
And remember if Paul comes in, we still have that twenty-one thousand on that forest money, that special project.
He's got a new project, right? Well, I think he was gonna be.
Get all the resources, yeah.
Yeah, he's gotta get that.
He's gotta get one, and I can hear him standing right there.
That's the request.
I know, it may be easy, but if we don't catch what we took back.
He has a place.
It will carry over, it will carry over to an exterior. I think it would, Mike, I thought it was being, they want to get a deer mark for something.
Do we need to get that in the paper?
No, we just need to send it over.
Hey, so the, the Mensa Road thing? Are you on that? You're gonna get that done?
Yeah.
We were just talking about this twenty-one thousand dollars. Well, why don't you, why don't you see Mike and get her, get the wording the way you want it, and let's get it going like today or tomorrow, okay? All right, thanks, Mike. Bye. He said we just talked about it. Have a great day.
Okay, you sure they're gonna spend more?
I wanna see if there's something there.
Yeah, ask Brian, see.
He's gotta kill us.
Newspeak a little less, man.
Third, third quarter kills coming.
I thought it was weird that he was.
Yeah.
You crybaby.
That took me by surprise.
Always a crybaby.
Yeah, you are. You couldn't even respond.
That's what I thought it was, I don't know.
So we send that stuff to Karen at Soil Confederation.
Oh, God.
And she got it.
Oh, thanks, Mike. Kinda frustrated me with that, just cause they wait till the last, she's had that shit, she said she was coming back up. That's the only thing I was pissed about. They want us to do all the labor, you know, this thing that's just like on that wood breath and that other stuff where the state ditch. They weren't even doing all their work. And that's what, only thing I was trying to tell them, Bill, is that I know the federal, the whole deal is they never doing none of the chasing, it's us. It's all a pile of us no shit on you. That's all I was trying to tell them, and then, like with that letter, I was fine with what was on that letter, but it was way too mad.
The salvers are raised on.
Give them a loaf next time. And he was mad. Man, it just frustrates me, you know, that solid waste deal and that compost, like, everything, they want it, but they want us to do everything to give. And then I just, you know, we spend a lot of money on this, sure, you might get that money, but what's it gonna entail on your duty? All duty, John's duty, it's, this ain't free money, it's not.
It's not a whole, we give you money for what they want you to do.
And then you have to do what they want.
And you have to jump in all their boots.
Yep. I just think it's in a terrible spot, if we're searching a mink somewhere, you think someone will grant it, have a look.
This is, this is the work.
Actually, don't even crap around all out, probably break it, cause I mean, no, here's something, make it more. Just, I don't, I don't make my painting, or work on this part, got no shit going on, obviously, it's forest and this stuff. Stuff that is actually really getting money about, but it's air, but I don't see anything.
We keep track of it.
They wanna do it, they should set up their own site, you know? Conservation business, set up their own site, they should take care of it, hire somebody to do it, and they know what animals are coming in. They even go tell people, not us, telling the landowners, you can't bring cows every day. Or you're gonna, how we got, how we're bringing the cows around? You're gonna check the brands every night now? I just, I need a bad deal in that water system.
Well, they could come invite us.
It's a down cow, way down.
Yeah, MSU, I think it was, did a paper about, um, those sites, uh, carcass sites and what to do. MSU did a report on the, those carcass sites, how to eliminate the smell, how to compost it and all that other stuff.
See, we had a guy come in Dallas, Howard, it happened, I, you know, we got flooded so bad, we, it was up like a couple, three hundred thousands here compared to Egypt. Plus they ran from other counties, ninety from another county, and it just, whenever it's first set up, it was just supposed to be a small, small deal. And all it was about was pretty severe for wolves. It come from the Blackwood Chavels. And they went in and got that money and then they started getting this, and now, here we are, we're trying to, I'll take care of it. There's no money.
I'll be, I don't, well, I, like I said, there's a paper on how to do it, you should be able to make money with the compost, no?
You gotta be so careful, you know, cause it's what happens if you're liable, you take that out of somebody's yard, and what if there's a, some sick, and then you drag that out to somebody's cow yard and dump it over the field, and say an elk got mixed up in it, and then everybody showed up like, well, you know, you take that compost out there and dump it in somebody's field, then you got all that chronic waste out there.
Oh, I don't know, Eco Compost does it, doesn't it? Eco compost, I mean, don't they sell, they sell it?
They got it, they got it. We're not set up, we don't have, we have to rent a shaker and everything.
So then these other counties are just dropping their animals off in there too? Don't you have a say in that?
Who drops them off there?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we know, a lot of times they show up and we're not there, you know, if we're closed Sundays and Mondays, you get there and, uh, like the state will drag in dead animals, throw them out, cause they got a key there, and then that guy who drops the cows off, he has a key, so we don't, a lot of times know what's coming, and then during the day, you get a rancher coming in with fifteen cows on the back of the trailer. And you're trying to take care of that. It's in a terrible place, it needs to be out somewhere where you have more room where you can actually push the shit around, level it out, and then throw it on and run over it, and getting the water's gotta be on it all the time.
It's not mandated that you have to have a location like that, is it?
They, uh, they took something on it, so that's what it is, Suzie Marine. It's kinda, they set it up and then.
So it's not, but it's, it's not mandated by law that a county has to have a dump like that?
Nope, we were doing it just to take care, so they wouldn't have the dead animals laying out in the draw and having all, they're trying to say that it brought in more predators. Well, the ranchers killed more at that time, and, you know, we have more predators now than we did before, and this was.
Tell me about it, something Black Pine.
That's my opinion, I. See, and it was only set up with so many bins, and now they're trying to, well, maybe I'll put in another bin, we don't have the room, yeah. Cause you have to actually go up behind it to put the shit up there, and you got four lots right here, and they're pretty wide. If you put another bin, we don't have room, cause there's a ditch up here, so it's, we don't have the, we're getting too many dead animals.
I don't even know where it is, where was it?
Solid waste, go up to the dump and drum and just drive up there, as soon as you turn in the gate, take a left and you'll drive right to it. You see what's going on down, plus it's on a slope, I don't know, I just, it's, I sure, everybody says they work all over, but where ours is set up, I don't think it's a good spot. There's gotta be, by law, it's gotta be like, if you take it out to the state scene, some mile from houses, or if you were into a draw on a rancher's way, I shouldn't even quote that, if I'm sure. And there's a lot too much. There's a lot more time in it to be realized, and you gotta, what happens if we don't get the shade we used to put on there? What if one of the safe inlanders goes out of business? Do what, where do we get that?
I don't know, seems if it's causing problems, just get rid of it.
I don't know why they can't worry about it. Everybody's worried about the predator, they're here anyway, you should be feeding them.
Well, I know it.
It's pretty rank up there.
A few years ago, a certain party was dumping the stuff from deer up at Black Pine, you know, just at the top, and that brought in wolves.
Yeah, there's, I'm sure there's some of it, it seemed like a big damn headache to us, to me.
It is.
Cause how many times we broke down the county backlog, they're digging around, we're just digging right down to another two. Just you putting more time on everything, all that wages. They used to pay the guy to do it. Somebody has to pay that guy in the house or their cows around.
Yeah, I think the Soil Confederation, it's grown too bad.
So you think that, why wouldn't we just let them do everything?
Go find a place and build it, put it together.
They want us to do that.
Make good sense to me, I mean, instead of saddling us with it. Our labor, our equipment.
Mm-hmm. Hard like they'll do it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm sending a big horse laying there the other day. Funny, few people that are all for, you know, how good it is, but I've actually known when their animals die, they bury them. I remember catching a fish yesterday up in Georgetown, they wasn't got that guy, I say they're catching some really big ones.
They are, down in Eccleson's, uh, god, they, they were catching twenty-four, twenty-six inches, got a rainbow.
Did you ever hear anything more about that fish kill up there?
Uh, no, they haven't, uh, I don't know what they, I haven't heard anything about, uh, any of the biologists saying anything about it. And, uh, but I do know that the, uh, kokanee, they just aren't there anymore. Uh, nobody's catching, catching, uh, kokanee at all anymore. Even in the old, well, the cornhole that's right there by, uh, the old lodge, there have been people out there, they've, they haven't seen any fish or, or, I mean, they have cameras that they sit down at the bottom, and there, there's no kokanee in there at all for some reason.
They never figured it out?
Uh-uh, uh-uh. The population has gone down a bunch with the kokanee and, and they just don't. I know the lake trout, some of, lake trout get in from, uh, Silver Lake, every now and then they catch a lake trout in Georgetown. And lake trout love eating in kokanee. Yeah, yeah.
In the bin, I think he's got, uh, everything squirt away with Jake Hendricks. So, yeah, didn't have, didn't have it, they didn't spray his stuff. Ben said the stuff he's seeing is all, uh, bugs. So have you know I read the news?
Yeah, I have read it. This weekend, Matt. Didn't respond to play that I wasn't here.
So Mike, did you do this, uh, position description in any, what? She hit that one, but.
Where are you doing?
On the assistant.